Assigned one in the wrong place, so you'll have to go in the other place.
Oh.
Oh, we're on the air.
I gotcha.
We're on the air. We're on the air.
Okay.
In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, could it please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is live broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel? The mission statement of the Lunenburg Public Schools is to provide all students with skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning, so that they may find their own paths to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. Now, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to thank the Superintendent, Mr. Cassidy, for responding to all the questions that the School Committee had previously sent to you in regards to the budget and for being so thorough and complete, and hopefully we'll be able to answer anyone's questions tonight in regards to the budget. Do we have a presentation? We do not? Oh, okay. Public comments in regards to agenda items? I know that Mr. Levek has public comments.
I do have a public comment. I watched the Select Board meeting last night, and frankly, I was appalled by the behavior of the Select Board members in discussing the school issues. It was very unprofessional. Making statements, they're never going to get anything. They're never going to get that. And, you know, pipe dreams. It was extremely negative behavior from the Board of Selectmen concerning the five-year plan that Superintendent worked out with leadership about what the needs of this community are.
And she worked with town manager.
Working with the town manager, understood. It was, I was just appalled. And then there was some discussion about them insisting on being included in the LEA negotiations, which again, we have reminded them is not their purview. Fortunately, that was reminded to them again last night that that wasn't their responsibility. So, I encourage anybody who has not seen last night's meeting to understand or to at least go to YouTube, watch that meeting, see what its discussion was concerning their overreach, I believe, into the school departments' budgeting process and understanding what the needs are. And frankly, the overreach to town itself, who allocates funds at town meeting. I just thought it was very appalling.
Well, aren't two of those members up for reelection? Or aren't there two seats that will be open?
There will be, but I don't know which, I don't know which of the two seats are open next year.
I thought it might be Mr. McQuade and Miss Luck, Mrs. Luck.
I think you may be right, but yeah.
So, maybe some other interested party would like to run and...
Perhaps.
Perhaps sit on that board and speak for this.
Again, I just encourage...
Oh, I see someone sitting over there. Oh.
We need to be able to work together. We're, it's a small community.
Yes, it's a team.
It's a small team. I understand that there's limited funds. Superintendent was very forthright in saying, this is what we've identified as needs. We understand that we're not going to get this all in five years. It may take 10 years, but these are things that we, as a school community, need to educate our children. And the, just the disrespect in that meeting last night was, I assume if the Chair were actually there, would not have gone to that level. But that's my public comment.
Okay.
And I think the public needs to know that there's been a lot of cuts in the past years where we need to gain back some of those positions, never mind get to where we need to get. It's gonna take some time.
And reminding folks that a handful of years dialing back, we went through this cycle again where it was cut after cut after cut. And I remember Mr. Santry standing in this room, right at that podium, looking at the School Committee, saying, "You can't draw blood from a stone. There isn't any more to cut." So, if we dial it back that far, then, you know, at the cost of the kids in our district, you know, how long is it gonna take to get things back to a better place? So, it's unfortunate that we've workshopped and, as a committee, it's been important to us to try and have a better working relationship, symbiotic relationship with the Board of Selectmen. That was, so that's quite unfortunate.
And the concern too is that if we keep losing services, then the students are gonna keep leaving.
Yeah, for sure. And there goes money.
And people will leave, sell their house, and property values will go down.
Yeah, yeah. So, it affects the entire town.
And I understand that property taxes are going up. I mean, I've been here eight years and it's gone up 30% on my house. I get it. I don't like seeing those bills going up either. But I think we have a responsibility...
But the schools are what draws people to Lunenburg.
We have a responsibility to our schools and our children to educate them.
Yeah, but it's also what draws people to move to Lunenburg.
That was one of our driving factors, absolutely.
So, I think that town, the town people should remember that in the Select Board as...
Well, I would say, just from my experience at town meeting, I think the town people get it.
Yeah.
And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Do we have anybody else to make public comments in regards to agenda items?
My name's Peter Dearmark, 282 Pleasant Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. There have been discussions about the five-year projection from the School Department, three consecutive Selectment meetings now. And I think that the tone, tenor, and content of that conversation has ebbed and flowed throughout the course of the conversations. And I certainly share your frustrations, Mr. Levek, as I outlined in my public comments at last week's Board of Selectmen meeting, where I tried to be as productive as I could with my comments rather than lamenting the negative comments of the Vice Chair, which she did then go back and repeat multiple times again last night. So, I absolutely share your frustrations. That being said, she, as well as other members of the Board of Selectmen, have stumbled across very good topics that deserve discussion and deserve a very thoughtful and extended analysis. One of those areas is debt service outside of the Prop. 2.5 structure. And the fact that we are going to be reducing our debt service over the course of the next several years, and we have an opportunity to be very thoughtful and strategic about what we do with that capacity. Do we reduce taxes? Do we move to a strategy where we pay for our capital on an annualized basis outside of the Prop. 2.5 structure, which sounds like Ashby Doop, which is an area that the Finance Committee will likely explore in the coming year? Or do we go and spend upwards of $14 million to rehab a 60-year-old building, and then upwards of god knows how much more to upgrade a 50-year-old building, and continue to add to our debt, which explodes the tax rate to which people are certainly not going to want to then go and spend more money on programs? And I understand the importance of wanting to have great buildings. I think they're great too. I enthusiastically supported our last building project. But the reality is, is that we can't continue to build and take on debt and simultaneously support the programs and the services that we need to be able to support in this town. And these are the issues that we, as a town, need to have an open, honest, strategic conversation about and ultimately come to some hopeful conclusions. And I don't think that we're gonna come to conclusions on the five-year projection inside of the current budget season. You know, I think that these are, we probably need to focus on the budget over the course of the next several weeks and months, a couple of months. But then as soon as we're done, we probably need to get right back into that conversation, you know, and think about how we can be smarter and more deliberate in terms of what our projected expenses are gonna be and the effects that that's going to have on everybody in town and our tax rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dearmark. Anyone else have a public comment? We have warrants and line item transfers to approve?
We do. There are three transfers this evening. The high school is requesting to transfer $219 from their general supplies line to their high school furniture line to fund the purchase of stools for the control room in the auditorium.
Any questions? Okay. No?
We're requesting a transfer of $1,389.32. This is to reconcile a slight increase to a student's out-of-district tuition cost. So, that tuition, that figure would be transferred from the sped tuitions, private, to the collaborative tuitions. And then a request to transfer $16,380 from health insurance to the regular transportation expenses, and this is to support an additional small bus that's needed to reconcile a unique transportation issue at this time until a more permanent resolution can be found.
And with that one, we don't anticipate that cost for next year, correct?
No.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion.
I move to accept the three-line item transfer requests as outlined by the Superintendent. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have regular session minutes from January 22nd. And I think we were updated to reflect changes that someone may have suggested. Yeah?
Let me check the other ones. I think they're fine.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I'll move to accept the minutes of the Wednesday, January 22nd, regular session meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
So, I'd like to remind everyone once again that February is school registration month. We are accepting registrations for our preschool, our kindergarten, our 2020 summer extended day, our 2020, 2021 academic extended day before and after-school program, our early learning center. And all of the registration forms and additional information have been posted on the district website as well as other pertinent links. As an example, the information is also available under the extended day link as well as the district website. Regarding the five-year financial forecast, Mr. Cassidy and I were present last Tuesday at the Board of Selectmen meeting to answer questions during an open question-and-answer session on the five-year staffing plan that has an impact to the five-year financial forecast. I've held some recent student lunch forums throughout the month of January. Various topics included the homework-free breaks, the Thanksgiving break, and the homework-free break that was requested at the high school. The transition between 8th grade and 9th grade, because some students in prior forums have talked about how that's a difficult transition for them. And we actually have a student at the high school now working on an orientation program for 8th graders as they're getting ready to transition into 9th grade. And we also talked a little bit about bullying in general. What my takeaways are is the kids actually do appreciate the homework-free time to be with family. One 8th grader talked to me about the fact that his parents both work long days, and by the time they get home, they have something for dinner, and he does a little bit of homework and he's off to bed. And he really doesn't get to see much of his parents during the week, so he really does enjoy having homework-free time during the breaks to spend time with his family. And that was a sentiment that was echoed amongst other students as well. High school students did mention that they had some concern because there might have been some teachers who, in anticipation of no homework during the break, loaded things up ahead of time or maybe held things and gave everything upon return. Hopefully, that could be alleviated if teachers had ample notice to plan appropriately. So, hopefully, we can remedy that as well. Regarding this idea of bullying, the students report that they don't really experience any physical bullying or intimidation. It really, it tends to be verbal, and it typically comes across in the form of sarcastic humor, which is still hurtful. So, we talked a little bit about that, and I'll be following up on some of the comments that the students shared in the context of these forums with the leadership team, so that we can talk about ways that we might be able to address them. Social hosting. So, this was a topic that was brought to my attention in the fall. How can we address a culture where it might be the norm or acceptable for adults to host gatherings of minors and perhaps even either turn a blind eye to the fact that they might have access to alcohol? Or worse, potentially providing it? So, I had a conversation with the District Advisory Council about this a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about ways that we could approach this. We talked about, you know, is there a need for a different committee? Or do we have structures in place that are appropriate to engage in this kind of dialogue and come up with maybe some solutions, proactive solutions, to educate not only students but parents, the community? So, we'll be involving SAD, the Wellness Committee, the Behavioral Health Advisory, the Community Service Club, the Middle and High School School Advisory Councils, and ROR is coming to the Wellness Committee meeting in March. So, we'll talk to them as well and see if we can't partner up on some presentations that might be beneficial for the community at large on that particular topic. Parent-teacher conferences was another topic that came up during the District Advisory Council meeting, and their advice really was to have the School Advisory Councils take this up for consideration. The feeling was that the 10-minute meeting is really not enough. It's not enough from the teacher's perspective, and it's not enough from the parent's perspective. So, we talked about different ideas for how that might be reimagined, but ultimately, they thought that the discussions should be taken back to each of the school levels, to the School Advisory Councils for some more discussion and perhaps some recommendations to come from there. The National Conference, there's a National Science Teachers Association Conference in April, April 2nd through the 5th, in Boston. It's not, you know, every so often, the national conferences come through Boston, so our teachers are pretty excited that they'll have an opportunity to attend the National Conference this April. We have been awarded, one of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Civics Teaching and Learning Grants. Lunenburg in partnership with North Middlesex Regional School District, North Reading, Melrose, Reuben, Haverhill, Lynnfield, Tewksbury, Watertown, Winchester, and Danvers Public School Districts have been awarded this grant in the amount of $38,250. The grant will fund professional development in civics. This is with the new, the new requirements for civics and the new framework for social studies and history. And I just would like to thank Nancy Milligan, who's the Assistant Superintendent in North Middlesex, for coordinating all of this and actually being the one to submit the grant on behalf of all of these districts. I'm excited for the work. Our teachers are excited for this opportunity as well. The Student Opportunity Act School Plans. On Monday, the Commissioner's Office released a guidance document for the plans that each district will be required to submit by April 1st. And there's a webinar tomorrow to provide some additional guidance as to how to complete the plan.
Who's gonna be sitting in on that webinar?
I will.
Okay.
Because I'll be completing the plan. So, usually in those webinars, they'll go through all of the particulars, but you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and have them answered, so that's usually pretty helpful. So, I'll be, I'll be participating in that webinar. And lastly, regarding school safety. So, at the last meeting, there was some conversation around safety at the schools and students not feeling safe, and I just wanted to make sure that I clarified. So, the survey that was conducted, the questions actually were, "Do you feel you belong or fit in at school?" And 75% of students said they felt that they did, but that means 25% don't. And the other question, "If you needed help with a personal or school problem, how many adults at the school do you think you could go to for support?" And almost 20% said zero adults they felt they could go to. Again, very concerning. These data points are very concerning, and if you recall, in the fall, when Mr. McGrath came forward to present his school improvement plan, he actually referenced this data, and it is incorporated into one of the goals in his school improvement plan. We do take this information very, very seriously. This is something of concern, no doubt. But I just wanted to be clear that the questions really weren't targeted at, "Do they feel safe?" However, we do have data from a Department of Ed survey that students in grades 5, 8, and 10 take when they take the Science MCAS test. So, that data has been compiled and reports are available for the schools. So, at the next meeting, we'll present that data to you, and that really gets at the students' perspective of the school climate and the learning.
So, that was the Lunenburg, the high school?
Yes.
Survey, not the middle school survey? That Wendy talked about in the last meeting?
Was there a question on safety in that, in the Wellness Committee one? This was the stress survey.
So, no, the wellness, actually, that was...
The safety. Was that, was there a safety question in that one?
No.
No, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That was, that was different topics. That was actually, that was drugs and...
The drug, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just...
So, I just, I didn't want to leave folks with the impression that there had been questions about how students feel in terms of, are they feeling safe at school? While, you know, you can make a case for if they feel comfortable at school, you know, that might also be connected to how they feel in terms of, do they feel safe at school to reach out to adults? So, there may be a linkage there, but I didn't want to leave anyone with the impression that there were many students in our schools that don't feel safe. And that's all here.
That civics professional development meeting is, was that the group of schools that they had at North Middlesex for the Professional Development Day? Where was that?
The Professional Development Day at North Middlesex was just North Middlesex and Lunenburg.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering how she arrived at these towns.
So, many of these towns, probably not all of them, but many of these towns were involved in a curriculum mapping project, and we have been participating in a collaborative effort to map out the new curriculum to align with the new standards. So, many of these folks have been a party to that and signed on to this particular grant for this professional development in civics.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have a student rep today, so there will be...
Have we, I just have a question. Have we, one thing that we outlined in was looking at having some sort of report sent, you know? And I haven't seen that. We've, in five years on School Committee, I've, this has been the year where we've seen very little in terms of a student representative?
Right.
And then no sort of reporting back? I mean, I know, I know life is busy, but even just a paragraph if they've reached out, because we had also talked about expanding that position, because this is something that students get to put on, on their resumes, about reaching out to each school, just to get a tiny blurb from each school what's going on. So, it would be great to see if we could start, you know, from now till the end of the year, getting that, even if the student rep can't be here.
And she did do that, the first meeting that she couldn't be here, she did send me a report. I'll email her directly.
That would be awesome.
And see if she could, if she can't be here, if she could submit something to me ahead of the meeting.
It's just a great way to hear directly about what's going on in each of the schools, particularly if, like tonight, with the nature of our agenda, we don't, we don't have reports. And sometimes, we haven't had since the previous meeting, you know, a school council?
Right.
You know, update? It's one thing if there's a school council update, because you kinda hear what's going on, but...
Yep.
But not always, so it'd be great.
Okay. New business action item is fiscal year '21 school choice recommendation.
Okay, so, the current 8th grade enrollment is 143 students. We typically lose about 20 students in the 8th grade to 9th grade transition, as 20 students typically head off to Monty Tech for high school. In discussions with the high school administration, they do feel that even though this is a little bit bigger class than typical, they still feel that they could support 10 school choice seats for 9th grade next year. Last year, the committee approved 20 school choice seats for the current 9th grade year. There are still nine of those 20 unfilled at this time. The current enrollment for the 9th grade this year is 110 students. So, the administration would recommend leaving those nine, the nine that were approved last year, roll those forward and leave the nine open for next year's 10th grade. So, in summary, the recommendation is, for the 2020, 2021 school year, 10 school choice seats, grade 9, 9 seats for grade 10.
Question? Any questions?
No.
Is there any, I don't know, it is a larger class. Two years ago, there was a larger class. You know, every couple of years, we have that larger class. Do we have any data or thought on, you know, if that's affected particular class sizes for certain classes? For example, sometimes there's, there's only one honors, you know, typically there's two honors bios, but things like that in terms of enough, in opening it up for additional slots? Can they assess students coming from the outside well enough? Or do they take petitions from them if they wanted to do that? Is there enough space in all the classes?
There really should be. Because if you remember, the average class size at the high school was about 18 to 20. There are classes that have a higher class size, you know, up to 28. That was the max of any one class period, 28 students in a, in a class. We also have some courses that have lower enrollment, typically your advanced placement classes. But the average class size really still could absorb additional students into the, into the class. You think the average class sizes for the middle school are 25, 26, and Turkey Hill and the primary are 24, 25. There is room for additional students in, in the class sections.
So, is there a reason why it is only for the 8th and 9th grade or the 9th and 10th grade?
The high school.
High school.
Because of the class sizes.
No, but I think, why are we not having then the 1 through 7 as well discussion?
So, our class sizes are at a place K8 that we really couldn't take additional students So our class sizes are at a place K8 that we really couldn't take additional students in. It would increase class size above that threshold that you, you kind of want to stay in that maximum around 25. We're already there. If we were to open up seats, then you're, you're talking about having to hire a teacher, provide a classroom, furnish a classroom, curriculum materials for an additional classroom. So there's more costs that would be incurred from, from opening seats at other, at other grades at this time.
Thank you.
So that would mean about 133 students in that class?
Potentially. There are sometimes students who, for different reasons, programmatic offerings elsewhere, that, you know, they, they opt to go to private schools or choice to other districts that have programs that we can't offer. As an example, last year, two students from the high school came to meet with Mr. Cassidy and myself, and they really wanted to be able to start an ROTC program at the high school, because they want to go into the military, and they have other friends who want to go into the military, and this would be something that would be very beneficial to them. Unfortunately, they are no longer supporting new ROTC programs. We could not start one. But if you have students who know that they, they want to go into the military, they might opt to go to a high school that has an ROTC program, and that's just something that we are not going to be able to offer. I'm not saying that we're losing lots of students for that reason, but that's an example.
And how many, I know the average is 20 for Monty Tech the last few years, so right around there.
Right around there.
Eighteen, 20. How many seats do we actually have at Monty Tech? Do you know that offhand? With this bigger class, we might lose more.
I want to say that last year, when I was at a meeting of the superintendents hosted by the superintendent at Monty Tech, we had 25.
About 25.
I think that they probably make adjustments year to year. But that's our, that's our target, probably somewhere between 20 and 25 annually. I have not received any notification from Monty Tech at this point as to how many seats would be open for Lutonburg for next year.
For next year? And I think their application is until like at the end of March.
Yeah, I was going to do the assumption that they would apply, and then they go through the application process and then determine if they get in. I didn't know it was determined based, I don't think there's any criteria in the town.
There's a quota.
No, there are, they have, they have a number, yeah. And, and I think their application deadline is the end of March this year. So we all know.
Could be on waiting list.
Yeah, you could be on waiting list, yeah. Okay. So we need a motion to approve.
Just one, one last question. Of the four classes in the high school currently, the largest one has how many?
120.
That's the sophomore class.
I'm just curious what that number says.
In our, our current...
Our current sophomore class.
10th grade class. I think that is the largest class at the high school.
It should be.
And where did, what number does that, I'm just, if you don't have it, it's okay.
I keep, well...
No, it's fine.
Is that on roll?
Yeah, on roll.
Current eighth, 10th.
I mean, I know it's somewhere in my, somewhere in the vast...
It's like 120 something, right?
No, I should carry this with me everywhere.
Oh, that.
Uh, let's see.
Can you see it?
Not real.
That's...
Uh, let's see. We are round about 109, 110 for the ninth grade, 128 for the 10th grade, 122 and 101 for 11th and 12th.
And wait, what's the, 122 is the junior class?
Yes.
And then that would be 130.
Thank you.
It was a small class, the small class graduating, correct?
Yes.
It was a small class graduating.
Yeah.
It's the smallest class in the high school, I think.
Yeah. Usually is.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to approve 10 school choice seats for grade nine and nine grade, nine seats for grade 10 for the 20 to 11 school year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so that, will, will that, when will that open?
So we will post that it has been approved, the number of seats, and we'll post the application tomorrow.
And how does that work? Is that a lottery?
They apply to be in a lottery now. We, we just opened 10 seats for next year's ninth grade. By the deadline, we're only received seven applications. There's no need for a lottery.
Right, okay.
We only have a lottery if, if we have more applications than we have seats. I'll keep you updated as we see applications coming in.
Okay. Now, it's the budget Q and A. If anyone has any questions in regards to the budget? School committee members, anyone have a question?
I haven't been answered.
Yeah. And you saw all the questions that were in the...
I see the questions that were asked.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, come on, sir.
Yeah, no, no. Okay.
Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. My understanding right now is that the projection that was shared by town manager in the five year forecast was a two and a half percent increase. She obviously has not published her budget yet for next year. The current proposal, superintendent's proposal is a 4% increase. The numbers are always fluid at this stage. I believe the governor's budget came out last, maybe last Wednesday.
Two weeks ago, two weeks, yeah.
Okay. So it was exactly two weeks ago, and I believe the number was up about 200,000-ish from...
About 155.
From what we anticipated. But then, of course, just in the last day, we learned the new growth number in town is less, about 125, 150,000 dollars than we anticipated. The, sounds like we'll get your feedback. The, I believe the insurance numbers are looking like they're a little less than what have been projected. My purpose in stating all this is I'm wondering if you have an update, Dr. Burnham, in terms of your communications with the town manager? You know, are we, are we looking at any level of flexibility above that anticipated two and a half percent? And what could that ultimately mean in terms of what would need to be cut from the 4% should the school committee need to get there?
So as you said, there are some numbers that are still a little bit fluid at this point. We should have the final figures for the health insurance costs by the end of the month. At that point, things will start to firm up a little bit more. Obviously, the 4% budget that we presented includes a six and a half percent increase factored in for health insurance, correct?
Right. Is it already back down at 3.9?
Yeah, it's somewhere right now in the upper threes, just under 4%. And, and we think that that's reasonably safe at this point to, to think that it wouldn't be higher than that, which was good news. We haven't yet made the adjustments down to that figure. We'll wait until we get the final figure. But clearly, that then, making no changes to staffing or expense lines or anything, just that alone will bring the request to a lower percent request. It will still likely be more than the two and a half target. But once we determine how much the actual needs that we've outlined will cost, once we have those health insurance numbers locked in, then, then we're down to a more realistic figure to try to figure out how to close the gap between the 2.5 target and the budget that we've, we've laid out for everybody. When we presented, we talked about the things that we would be likely looking at if we had to get to that two and a half, or even if we were fortunate enough, as we were last year, to have monies to support a 3% increase. Regardless, we would still be looking likely in those same areas for the cost savings to get to, to get to the target. And in jeopardy would potentially be the assistant principal position that we requested in the 4% budget. And we would look to reduce the school psychologist from a full-time school psychologist to a part-time. And then we would look to other areas to find the, the rest of the gap.
And that assistant principal was the one we were looking for for the primary school at Turkey Hill?
So hiring an assistant principal at this time, if we were able to do so, would mean that we would have a full-time assistant principal at the Turkey Hill and a full-time assistant principal at the primary school, rather than one person split between the two buildings.
And the school psychologist is full-time?
We are hoping for full-time.
We want, that's what we want. She, that's what we would like, part-time. 2.5?
So we currently have one full-time.
Oh, split.
Split between the two.
Okay.
If we could secure another full-time, we could have a full-time
Okay.
School psychologist at the Turkey Hill and one at the primary school. So school psychologists test all of our students for special ed. They're the ones that do
Testing.
The testing. That's hours of testing. And we have many students who are special education students at the primary school.
Has that number gone up?
It's a fairly high, high number. I think in part because we don't yet have in place a solid tiered intervention for reading, for math, for writing. Once we get those solid supports in place and teachers are clear about what their role is in a full classroom setting, what additional supports some students might need, and what more involved supports a smaller number of students might need. And what are those supports? And who's providing those supports? That is not clearly articulated at this point. It's something that we know that we need to work on. And we are working in that direction at the primary school this year in terms of tiered interventions for behavior. We need to do the same for the academics. I think potentially, once we have those supports in place, there may not be as many referrals for, for students to special education. You know, we would likely give them supports and hope that those supports are enough so that they can see some progress. So in addition to doing all of the testing, the school psychologists also chair every initial meeting and every three-year evaluation meeting. And that's everywhere in the district. Those meetings, those IEP meetings, where it's an initial meeting. A child will be, the team will decide if the child will be picked up for special education services. Every three years, the child has to be reevaluated and has to be deemed eligible to remain on special education services. So our school psychologists chair all of those meetings. So they're spending an awful lot of time in meetings. There are more meetings to be had at the, at the primary school, because we have the preschool, kindergarten, first, and second grade. So there's an additional grade at the primary that we don't, we don't see at the, at the Turkey Hill. So there's more chairing and more testing that happens at the primary school.
And those reevaluation meetings are like mandated by law, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah. We have to have them, the child has to be reevaluated within a certain timeline. Reports have to be written within a certain timeline, a meeting has to be held within a certain timeline. It's all compliance-driven.
And if they're not, they can...
Yes, we're out of compliance, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. If we had someone in the building full-time, not split between two schools, they would be more available for supporting students with, with more significant needs, behaviorally, emotionally, socially. They could run social skills groups with children. They currently serve as part of a response team. Should a child be heading into a, a crisis situation behaviorally in a classroom, you know, the call goes out and a response team goes to assist the child and take the child to a place where they can process through with adult support, whatever it is they're going through. So to have a school psychologist in each building would be very beneficial to supporting the students and, of course, all the compliance issues with, with special education as well.
So in answering Mr. Beardmore's question, those would be the first two things in closing the gap?
Potentially. They are, they're on a list of things to be considered, that we would potentially lose the assistant principal, potentially see a reduced request for FTEs for the school psychologist. We also indicated that we would take a look at reducing teacher FTEs, potentially adjusting paraprofessional hours or assignments. We did that last year. We really can't, we can't do much more in terms of reduction of daily hours for, for paraprofessionals. If, if we're looking at paraprofessionals and reassignment of paraprofessionals, we're talking about the non-special ed
Yes.
Paraprofessionals. Your kindergarten paraprofessionals. Currently, we have six kindergarten classes. Each of those classes has a full-time para. We may be looking at having to go to a model where a para is shared between two classes. It would not be ideal. It's, it's not something educationally that I would be happy to recommend. But we really can't make too much more adjustment to the special ed paras. We would have compliance issues. We talked about potentially reorganizing district departments. We could look at our IT department and maybe cut back some FTEs in IT. Again, it's not ideal. We could take a look at our maintenance grounds custodial and see if there are any adjustments that could be made there for some savings. Again, it's, it's not ideal.
I thought we were down already, have you been on that?
We are. Well, returned.
Oh, okay.
Returned. But still on limited duty.
Okay.
Yeah. And with any reduction to FTEs, there's also potentially some savings there with health costs, health insurance costs. Right? So when you make those FTE adjustments, you're also potentially reducing the, the health insurance costs. And we would look to level fund the school-based expense accounts. And again, last year, we cut those lines. So essentially, to level fund them with costs for materials increasing essentially is...
Cutting.
A cut.
It's cutting.
So those are the, the areas that we would look at. You know, I'm not, at this point, determining, you know, teacher FTEs, what that might be or what it definitely won't be. We'll have to take a look. And the other thing is, is that when we get to the end of the month... And the other thing is, is that when we get to the end of the month, when the kindergarten registration has closed, it's never closed, um, we'll see what our baseline number is looking like. And we know that we will continue to see registrations in March, April, May, June, July. So it depends really on what this baseline number looks like at the end of February. Um, we may be in a position where we have to bring the kindergarten position back on the table. So there's still a lot of unknowns at this point.
Hi, Peggy Proctor, 141 Gilchrist Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Um, when you talked in the budget about what would happen if we don't get four percent, the potential things you would have to look at, um, as far as the full-time employees go, do we run the risk when you reduce, um, someone to, you know, four-fifths teacher, that we begin to lose good people who?
Mm-hmm.
Or reduce the, looking for a, um, school psychologist at point five, when truthfully, most people that are looking for work, and particularly in an area that is in such high demand, um, that these people can kind of go where they want to go, that we would run the risk of actually not filling that position?
We absolutely run the risk of losing teachers if we cut them from a full-time position to a, a part-time position, even if that's a point eight position.
Right.
Um, still benefited, but it's still a reduction in their salary. If, if they can find a full-time position somewhere.
Right.
They're, they're gonna go. And, and that's just the truth. Um, in this climate that we're in now, with the monies that are coming from the Student Opportunity Act to the larger districts, with the priorities that have been outlined by the commissioner, the plans that districts have to submit by April 1st have to align with those priorities. And one of those priorities is around social, emotional, learning, mental, behavioral health. We anticipate that board-certified behavior analysts are going to be in high demand. Um, school psychologists, school social workers. Um, it, it is going to be a, uh, we're anticipating a highly competitive climate to fill positions like that. So yes, if we're looking to fill a part-time school psychologist position, it's going to be difficult to fill. However, um, you know, uh, we can look to try to recruit retirees who could come back to work with part-time hours that would not negatively impact their retirement.
Um, this isn't a question.
To fill a part-time.
I hope it's okay if I make a comment. Um, thank you for fighting for the schools. I, my concern as a citizen, um, and I think, um, you, we run the risk. I don't think anything in this budget is, um, pie in the sky. I don't think any of it's luxurious. I think it's critical need. And I, you know, I know you guys have looked at projections and, you know, we're getting a hundred houses in a development. Those are gonna bring in kindergarten kids. I mean, it, it's a fact. And if we let our schools erode, we're done. Um, you know, it, that always bothers me when I hear people, "Yeah, my taxes went up too, my valuations went up." I mean, that's part of living in a town. And when you're a small town, the school takes up the majority of the budget. That's just the way it is. But I wanted to thank you because I just see, I know people say, "Well, how come this? And how come we need that?" And I'm not sure that people, it's not out of ignorance, but I don't think people understand, A, it's law that we provide services for children, um, that I believe that that, that services have, the need for services have increased as has our population. And I would hate to see the town, um, again, come in with a two-point-five when I think four points, the four-point, four, sorry, I get nervous. The four percent is critical. I don't think that we can, that it's reasonable as a town to look at making cuts, particularly in the feeder schools, um, that are feeding, because without the feeder schools and without an environment where kids get a good education and we're dealing with kids that need support socially, emotionally, behaviorally, the quality of our education is gonna, gonna go downhill. And right now, we have a good reputation. Even with limited electives, we have kids getting into some incredible schools. And when you think about, we're not a Lexington, we don't have robotics, we don't have 10 languages. When you think about, we have kids that go to Ivy League schools and some just incredible schools around the country, I think we've done a really good job. And I think really as a town, we have a responsibility to meet this need in this budget this year. There's no, there's no hot fudge sauce on this budget. We need it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important too that the, the citizens know that there's a big difference between our budget and the five-year plan that was presented.
Correct.
And we know in the conception of that, people watching the Selectman.
Right.
On YouTube, uh, this is the budget that we need to, to work and to have those students learn.
Right. The five-year plan is really, um, projection based on trends in the data, um, based on what we know we need because we're living in the schools daily. We, we, we see the need. Um, so those needs are identified. The projections for staffing based on the trends in the data is included in that five-year plan. Um, I think the only, the only thing that really was kind of a, a wish was the thought that we would be able to expand our foreign language offering down to the fifth grade, where the fifth grade would be a foreign language exploratory experience. And then we would have foreign language six, seven, eight, nine through 12.
As we did here.
Yes.
Many years ago.
Right. So that is not based in a need. But those couple of foreign language teaching positions that were in that five-year plan, tho- those were the only ones that weren't based on projections based on data or what we know we've identified as need. Like, no one in the district is gonna argue the fact that we need a curriculum director in the district. No one is gonna argue that. Yet we keep delaying it because there's more critical need. So every year, yes, we, we did, we did look at the strategy for continuous improvement that we presented, that you approved back in the fall with those four objective areas. And we discussed what positions do we need to be able to execute this plan? Those are in that five-year staffing plan. But every single year, just as we did this year, we're gonna look at that list and we're gonna prioritize based on the most critical need that we see for the upcoming year. And we know that positions are gonna get pushed out another year. That's just the reality of what we're, we're looking at. But I feel that I have to present the needs that we have identified and anything that we could reasonably anticipate might be on the horizon. And that's what that five-year plan did.
And I think the, the town, can you kind of see that too? That year after year, there were cuts made. You can't bring that all back in one year.
Right. And I think, you know, if you look back, um, you'll see that often the, the proposed budget that came in, even prior to me, the year prior to me, um, Superintendent Combs brought in a proposed budget that was a five percent increase. And then I think it was a three, five-point-five percent increase. And it, it was a three percent budget that year, right? So that's part of the challenge, right? We identify a need, it's round about five percent. We can't meet that need, so some of it gets pushed off to the next year.
Well, I think it's important to put that, even though we know the town can't afford all of those positions, the town very much needs to know what the children need. And it's our responsibility to put that out there, that it is our responsibility to say to the town, in order for these children, our children, to be educated correctly, we need all of this. We understand we're not going to get all of this.
Right.
But this is what is needed because today's education is very different than the education even my kids had, you know, 15 years ago. It is very different.
Very different.
I mean, classrooms all the time.
To be an administrator.
It's very different.
Yeah.
And I think it's very important that we put forward to people, this is what the kids need. We can't afford it, we can't afford it, but this is what they need.
And I think having this information out there, this, this five-year plan, and as well as last year, identifying the needs that were not met by meeting that, that budget, is that we have increased the level of transparency into what the requirements are to educate the students of Lunenburg. Uh, and, and so the public is aware, these are the things that, that need to be taken care of for our students to remain successful and for the schools to remain successful. I think that transparency speaks volumes and it's something that, that has not been available prior. We didn't have a five-year plan before this year. And so this is something that will allow, or at least, you know, five-ish year plan. But this will allow the, the town over the next several years to look at that and say, "Oh yeah, we, we learned about this five years ago, we really should start talking about it." Just like we're doing with capital planning.
Mm-hmm.
We have something on the capital plan for five years. We usually say, "It's about time that we, we get this funded." So to me, this is like putting the town on notice. These are the things we need. And these are things we're gonna come to you and ask for at some point. Be prepared.
I think it's, it's also, you know, identifying all of these needs, should there ever become a funding source, a grant opportunity, a new grant opportunity that could fund a position on this five-year plan, then it's not coming out of nowhere. We're not, it doesn't appear as though, "Oh, we got some money, let's hire this position." No, it's a position that we identified that we needed and aren't, aren't we fortunate that now there's an opportunity for a funding source, um, for the position? And I, and I recognize that when we add positions, it's not like a one-time purchase. It, it's not gonna hit just that year's budget. But, but that's the challenge, you know?
Student Opportunity Act monies that come to Lunenburg. Can you talk a little bit about that only because I, I, I'm not, I want everyone to be clear that that money just doesn't automatically get dropped in the school budget.
Correct.
And I, I think that that could be the conception, uh, conception that people have. "Oh, great, the schools are going to get money from this." So.
But it goes specifically.
I just, I just want to be clear about.
It's chapter 70.
Yeah, it's more chapter 70 money. It's not just more money.
Right. But it's just.
It's earmarked.
And the monies.
Yeah.
Are going to be phased in over a seven-year period.
The monies from this year? Or they're?
The monies to fully fund the, the foundation formula, right? Um, are going to be phased in over a seven-year period. That's part of the Student Opportunity Act. It's going to be phased in. So, um, when I attended a, the mid-winter meeting of the Massachusetts superintendent a week ago.
Yeah, it was.
Roughly a week ago, um, the commissioner actually came and addressed the superintendent's briefly, um, and essentially let us know that approximately 85% of the funding this year is going to go to 35 districts. That means all of the other 150-ish districts are getting 15% of the money shared. So we, we are not going to see a large increase. Mr. Cassidy, do you want to address that at all?
I only, I brought that up just as the community looks at our budget and, you know, seeing in the news that this is happening. It sounds great in theory out there.
Right, the money's coming.
Right, money's coming. So why would they need more than two and a half percent?
Right.
So that, that's why I.
The money's going to the high-needs districts.
Yes, which we knew.
Wester, Boston.
Which we knew.
The cities.
Lawrence.
I'm not, I'm not sure I personally thought 85%. But again, why, why I bring, yes, just this year.
That could change next year.
But we're talking about this year's budget.
Right.
Next year's budget, so.
So Lunenburg is getting about $155,000 next year from the Student, uh, Student Opportunity Act, which is chapter 70. That percentage is lower than we've gotten over the last few years.
So this year, we're seeing a 2% increase, right?
Right.
Whereas last year, we saw a two-and-a-half percent increase in our chapter 70.
Chapter 70. So there's really no increase to us.
So we're actually at a loss this year. The Student Opportunity Act is giving us a loss.
It's, it's hitting us instead of.
Uh, listen, uh.
Wow.
Not to be the worst thing to advocate, uh, for public education.
It's the right thing to do.
It just did not, it, we're not gonna see the significant benefits of that additional money.
We're not gonna see the full of money.
Right. And in this particular year, that number's just lower than last year was.
I, I do believe that down the road, some monies will come in the form of grants. So it, it will all be coming to us in the form of our chapter 70.
Like the grant that, that professional development grant.
Correct. So that is not tied to the Student Opportunity Act, but something like that. So the Department of Education put up grant money to fund some professional development because they just realigned the social studies, history framework pre-K to 12. Teachers have been working in every district to realign curriculum and start to implement the new curriculum and the new requirements for civics projects. One at the high school level, one at the eighth-grade level. Stay tuned, there'll be more coming on that.
It's a good thing.
So to have, you know, the opportunity for some high-quality, um, professional development, particularly beneficial, I think, in a collaborative network like this because the networking with other colleagues in other districts is equally beneficial. It's not just the content. So this is a, this is an opportunity I'm, I'm really excited about for us.
So what type of grants do you think that this, yeah?
We, we may see some, you know, social, emotional, mental health kinds of grants down the line.
Okay.
Um, there, there may be some innovative curriculum-type grants down the line. Um, I, I, I'm not sure. I know that, you know, the commissioner's, um, rolling out a lot of, uh, new ideas. So we'll, we'll see where that vision takes us over the next handful of years.
So I was at, uh, my MasBONE meeting today and there's, there is some uncertainty with the grants moving forward. They're trying to, they're, the state is really trying to square away next year and the following year before moving forward and, and rolling out some of the grants. So, um, so I think the, the only thing that's certain is really what.
Chapter 70.
The chapter 70 and, uh, probably what we got this year is what we can kind of anticipate over the next few years from the Student Opportunity Act. So unless our student population changes.
That and some data reporting and a plan being submitted. We can count on that too.
Oh, yes.
Yes, new, new reporting requirements.
To get that money, that windfall.
To get that money, that windfall. That $150,000. The windfall of money. But the good news is, districts that are receiving less than $1.5 million only have to complete the short form. Oh. How long is the short form? Which is about four pages. And if you're receiving more than a million and a half, you have to complete like a seven or eight, nine-page form. I don't know, I think I fill out the seven or eight, nine pages for a million dollars.
I did advocate that. I would do that for the district today, so you could get the extra money, but it didn't work, unfortunately.
A couple of other things we had talked about with the Student Opportunity Act was the, the fully fund the charter of school reimbursement, that was another item that was in there. And then another item that I saw was the annual cap on the Massachusetts School Building Authority, spending by 200 million from 600 million to 800 million, too. So if we're looking for a new school, potentially, that might be a good avenue.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, you know, in the past, you've kind of had to get in the queue a number of years early. Yeah. But with additional monies, I'm thinking they might be able to fund more projects, so maybe the queue wouldn't have to be as long. Maybe, we'll see. Do we have any additional questions?
Yes, I was wondering if the superintendent could give the public, you talked more, you talked earlier about the timeline, I don't know if you can give the public a little bit more details on the timeline.
For the budget? Yeah. So by the end of this month, we should have a solid figure for our health insurance costs. Once we have that, we're a much better place to be looking at some more realistic numbers at that point. And then we'd be able to bring back to you some recommendations as to what a 2.5% budget actually would look like. We can also work up what a 3% budget would look like, if that would be helpful. Yes, I'd like to see that. Yes.
I'd like to see options.
3%.
Yes, absolutely.
The actual public would as well, so they can go to fit time meetings and town meetings and advocate as necessary. Yeah, just leave in what the percent would look like if we lost the assistant principal, if we lost the full-time council.
Sure. Yeah, and unfortunately, it really doesn't shift the percentage too much. We've kind of started to take a look at some of that, like, oh... Not enough, right? So would that be at the March, the first one in March? Could you do that, or... Potentially. 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 I'm slated to present a budget to the Finance Committee on March 12th. They had asked that I come in with a budget that had been approved by the school committee. I know that that is not, the timeline is, it's just not going to be feasible, I don't think. Perhaps, maybe going before the Finance Committee with a budget that is endorsed by the school committee, in other words, you support the items that would be in the 2.5, 3, 3.5 budget. So in other words, it's not just you bringing that forward.
Would the first meeting then in March be another Q and A?
Well, I think, I don't think we need to have a whole meeting, clearly.
No, apparently not.
Right, but yes, a block of time, that's one for the first, just...
Yeah, is that a way to, we'll talk about multiple Q and As.
Absolutely.
But also, the concern was if it's that March 4th, that you wouldn't have enough time potentially to...
It depends on when those final numbers come in for the health insurance.
And you're not at the March 4th meeting?
And I'm not here for March 4th.
That superintendent's not here at that.
So potentially, we could present a March 11th. Not that you have to vote to approve it, but then we could potentially have another question and answer at the March 18th. Hold on. Yeah, 18th.
Yes, that would be the 18th.
So typically, in the past, you've had your, your budget hearings, the first meeting in April. Yep. Is that, you would prefer to stay with that plan, where you would have the budget hearing and vote to approve a budget following that hearing?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. So what about the 4th? Do we want to move that meeting to the 11th?
That makes sense to me.
Well, if you can't be here, I mean, I won't be here, but I'm not as vital as you are, so I would...
I also feel like we'd have better information potentially, because at that stage of the game, one more week is going to give us more information, or has the potential to.
And I think the best information we can provide to FinCom...
You might have to find out about the town hall.
Yes.
On the 12th.
Correct.
If we've met the night before, yes.
Then that's the most up-to-date we can be.
Yeah.
Yep.
So does that NIES visit?
It's the 9th.
It's the 8th. The 8th, the Sunday.
I'm showing it also through Wednesday.
They will be here through Wednesday. They will be talking to you on Sunday.
Do we have a time for that?
Yeah. They have not yet shared a schedule with us. We need a time for that. But I do believe you will be having your meeting with the team at the Doubletree in Lemonster. Not on campus. And so, is that an individual thing, or are we all, because that's a core? Correct, so I would imagine that they would have appointment times through a block of time for you.
With each of us.
Potentially. As soon as I get a schedule, we will definitely share that with you. And the, the chairs of the, the high school committee that have been prepping for, for the visit, they'll be coming before you at the next meeting to give you a little bit of an update as to the work that they've done, what this visit will look like and feel like. It is, is part of the work that they must do, they must publicize the visit. So I'm helping them right now, publicizing the visit the week of March 8th. So we'll get the word out that the team is coming in.
So March 11th is okay?
Right, is that work for you?
Obviously, it wouldn't be in this location.
Right, we would have to probably have it...
So it would not be broadcast live.
Yeah, it would.
And we would have done Q and A.
We still will.
We still will.
Yeah, just not the whole, not the whole meeting.
Right. Can we get it broadcasted?
I don't think so.
Not live. It has to be taped, I think, in there.
But it could be taped.
Yes. It just won't be available live. Do we have any other questions? Yes, please, public.
Good questions and comments is different.
Yeah, yeah, that's all right, yeah.
First of all, I want to, we've obviously had some passionate disagreements over the last year. Those have been paying attention. But I really want to congratulate and thank you for taking the approach that you've taken to this year's budget. Clearly, there's some criticism, and when you do something different, it's bound to attract it. And I would encourage you to continue to pursue the avenue that you're on, and to continue to defend it and advocate for as much of the budget as it's been presented as possible. And to the greatest extent that you can, I would encourage you to attend selectmen's meetings and Finance Committee meetings over the course of the next couple of months, because your presence or absence is and has been noted. And that's not just for the school committee, but for anybody who are watching at home, particularly parents. There are certain members of this community and leadership in this community that needs to know that parents can be mobilized and can have an impact on both elections as well as town meeting budget votes, if it comes to that. And we'd get busy if we intend to do, to do that and get serious about it. But I think that there's good reason to begin that, to begin that process. Mr. Edman brought up a very good point, which is we've got to be very careful about the confusion between the five-year forecast and the FY '21 budget. And the FY '21 budget is what we're working on now, right?
Right.
You know, building on the strategy and the resource plan that was laid out, but they're different things. And the immediacy and the need associated with the FY '21 budget is immediate, and what we're going to deal with definitively over the course of the next couple of months. And we need, we need our focus and we need people's support to, to get to a conclusion that's the right conclusion for the town. I want to comment really briefly on the challenge and the balancing act that I think you folks have when it comes to the funding that goes into the primary school and the elementary school, and the funding that goes into the middle school and the high school. And Mrs. Stroka brought it up at your last meeting, and I think it was a valid point, and something that we've kind of touched upon a little bit here tonight with the discussion around school choice, which is middle and high school programs are important, and they're what retain our kids in our, in our schools, in our school system here in Lunenburg, and if we don't retain them, those dollars invariably go out of town. And it's very undemocratic, and we don't have control of those dollars when they do. On the other hand, the kind of spending that you're talking about, particularly at the primary school level, it could not be more important and could not be overstated. You know, it's, it's emotional and it's personal for me, because I have a child who started in the Lunenburg schools at three years and one day old, with a diagnosis that was pretty serious and pretty concerning. And today, he's an 11-year-old, perfectly functional, thriving fifth grader in Lunenburg. And I credit 99% of his success to the professionals in the Lunenburg Primary School. It was unbelievable. He had a full-time paraprofessional, he had great teachers, it was amazing, great socialization, everything, all of the resources that were brought to him were absolutely amazing. But he also had two parents who advocated for him and were very sensitive to his needs and spent a lot of time making sure that he had the resources, both in the school system and outside the school system, for him to be successful. And not every kid has that. And not every kid has, you know, the parents who've been educated to know the signs and understand the progress that needs to be made at certain milestones. And, and so these, these new positions that the superintendent is advocating for, and I believe that she has your support for, are critically important just to help identify those issues and to make sure that critical services are getting to the kids that need it. Because if they don't, and we're not able to make those progress, that progress on those individual kids and address those issues as early in the process as possible, then we're invariably going to be spending on placement and additional services and behavioral issues and other distractions down the line, in fifth grade, sixth grade, in the high school. So these are incredibly important, comparatively low-cost investments, when you think about it, that, that, you know, will pay off in, in real outcomes in the future. And I hope you join me in advocating for that, and I really want to, again, I know people watch this on YouTube and are watching it live. Please get involved, come to these meetings, and, and help the school committee advocate for the funding that it needs and that our kids deserve. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may ask, or ask through the chair on this one, in terms of, I watched the, I watched the selectmen's meetings usually after the fact, and there have been a few times where they're like, where's the school people? There's no school people here to ask questions of. And, two weeks ago specifically, there wasn't anybody from the school committee here or the superintendent to answer questions. And I'm wondering, because we have a policy that we have one person who can speak on behalf of the school committee, how do we address situations like that if we are to sit in the audience during these meetings and there's a question of the schools, and they say, oh, well, we've got somebody from the school committee here? What, I mean, how do we, how would we want to address that? Differ that to the superintendent, to the chair at a later date? Or, I mean, we have rules.
Oh, I know. But they're not sitting here today so that we can ask them questions.
True.
So, you know, they didn't, they haven't sent us an email requesting us to be at any of their meetings.
No, this is from the public, somebody from the public. It's a debate, it's not anybody from the school committee. Well, the one, the one specific guest, did we see anybody from the schools here? So, I mean, that's... But I think we see that in their meetings as well as our meetings, that a lot of people will come up and state they're speaking on behalf of themselves, not as a member of whatever committee they're on. But if you, if a member of the school committee is sitting in the audience and it's a, and if, for example, the conversation last night, oh, look, somebody from the school committee is here, what do you think? I think that might put the members of whoever is sitting in the audience...
Yeah.
...in a, in a bad position.
Oh, I agree.
So I, that's one of the reasons I haven't physically gone to the meetings.
Right.
Because I don't want to be put in that position.
Nor should you.
And frankly, Mr. Beardmore is far more eloquent than I am in his statements to the, to the, to the selectmen. But yeah, it's just that kind of dynamic. I don't know if, and I get the point that we need to be visible, and I've advocated for being visible, but there's a point where we can only go so far in terms of expressing any ideas. I think those, those questions about the budget specifically need to still come from the superintendent or through the superintendent.
And you were there. I was there. Unfortunately...
Oh, my goodness.
But this guest wanted to see...
But I did not realize that there would be no questions about the five-year financial forecast, and they would all be about the five-year staffing plan. And unfortunately, we had a policy meeting, and I had let the town manager's office know, and I was told to get there as quickly as I could, which I did. And I apologized that people were held up waiting, waiting for me, because I was the only one that could answer the questions that they came with, so sorry about that. But you had it at one of our meetings. The five-year. The five-year forecast. Yes. They could have easily attended one of our meetings, where they could have asked those same very questions, or they could have posed them to you in an email after seeing it on YouTube, the five-year forecast. It's very easy to write an email to the superintendent and have a quick response. And they do respond.
And they could also come tonight with...
They could have, we had, we had...
For years, we used to have a rep. We had a rep.
Yes.
For years.
And they got rid of that.
I know.
That was their, the new selectmen board. And that would have been...
Again, to Ms. Edman's point, it was a member of the public, not the board of the selectmen specifically asking for school committee members to be here to answer the questions.
Well, then they're not, then that person isn't aware that...
That's the school committee, yeah.
That's not how it goes.
I understood. It's the same person that scoffed at me when we said, when I said it was a public meeting. It's a meeting held to the public. But, anyway, so there's, there's that. So it's, and I'm sure that there's more than one, one person out there that would prefer to see people at meetings, but we are really limited in what we can discuss.
Correct.
Yes. Outside of this venue.
Right.
And I still think that, I still don't think that it's fully understood how limited we can be. So, while, anyway.
Well, it's a fine line when you speak to really convey clearly that this isn't the school committee speaking.
Right.
Or what I'm saying isn't on behalf of the school committee.
Right.
Because as we all know, what we say inside a meeting or outside of it can be misconstrued, And sometimes, some of those meetings get heated, and the next thing you know, you've got an exchange going and...
And unnecessary.
And the school committee said...
Well, that's exactly where it's going, yep.
So that's, that, that's the reason I don't attend usually those meetings in public. I did attend several planning board meetings, but that was unrelated to the budget stuff.
And sometimes, when things come up at those meetings, they come up, they may or may not have been an essential part of the agenda, that if, if one of us was looking at it, we might have thought... at it, we might have thought it to be what it was, you weren't expecting the night that you went to have those specific type, specific.
Well, I was prepared for questions, I just didn't.
Right.
Didn't realize that really all of the questions were going to be about the five-year staffing plan for the school department, because the, the question and answer was for the five-year financial forecast.
The town forecast.
Yes, which we, uh, now are part of, and that.
Right.
I was totally prepared to answer questions on that, but I do apologize that people were held up waiting for me to get there because there weren't any other questions.
So, do we have any answers then to Jim's question?
No, I will not be attending those meetings to represent that.
Sorry, I, so if, so I would.
On the off chance that someone has a question that night.
And we say, we, we just refer it back to the superintendent and the chair.
Yes.
Because we're not authorized to speak on behalf of the school.
I attend most frequently the finance committee meetings as the LA is on.
As our rep.
And, um, once in a blue moon, someone will turn over and say, what did the school do about that, and if it's factual?
Yes.
I would respond, mo, if it's something I don't know, or if it's not factual, then I would say they need to check with the superintendent generally.
Okay.
Just making sure that there was guidance.
Okay. Okay, so are we done with our budget question and answer? No one else has any more concerns, or no one? Okay. Public comment, open to anything that is school committee related, no?
I, I have.
You do?
I have.
Okay, Mr. Lebeck.
I, I have at least one out there, I may have a few in here.
Okay.
Uh, last Wednesday, I attended the MASC.
Yes.
Uh, safety in schools and, safety in schools workshop.
Yes.
Which I found, uh, very fascinating, and I have, uh, run out of time to type up my information for the superintendent and the administration to send to them.
Yeah.
Um, about school safety and, and several things around that, that was very, uh, informative.
Okay, so will you give them a copy? Can we see it as well?
Uh, yeah, I can see the email, please.
Yeah, okay.
Just sharing information.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and then there was one other thing that just slipped my mind.
Totally calm?
If I remember, it'll be next time.
Okay.
So, I, I, public comment.
Yeah.
I was taking some notes down, I just wanted to say that we have some amazing parents, uh, amazing volunteers with the PTO, and just in general, the parents have been great, um, our teachers are amazing, paraprofessionals, our additional staff, and I think one of the big things that we need to do is make sure that we're not fighting other departments for money, but also within ourselves, not fighting funding between, oh, I need the, we need the elementary school the money, or the middle school the money, or the high school the money, but really, put a focus more on cautiously trusting our administration team that are making decisions, and also as they're working with the teachers to make these best decisions for what's best for the school and what they feel, um, and not having parents, especially in citizens, fighting within themselves over the money, not only within the school, but also within departments too, and you think, if we're gonna be successful in this budget season, we need to work together, everyone has to work together with us.
I agree.
And it was great to have representation from the LEA at our last meeting, and to give us that, you know, a, a very similar synopsis.
Right. Oh, yes, that the teachers supported, the budget that was presented.
Yes, yes, so that was, that was really good to hear.
Yeah.
I remembered.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Leitman.
You bring in all kinds of people, they remember, um, I ran into, I ran into a gentleman the other day who, um, said, weren't you working with the middle, middle school, getting the middle school ba, basketball program going?
Yes.
I said, well, as a, on the school committee, we worked on that, yes, to get that going, and he was absolutely thrilled that it's going, it's going very successfully, um, he's very happy that his, his students are, are involved, um, so, it was nice to get positive feedback in the aisles of the grocery store. Instead of sometimes the scowls that, uh, I've forgotten, but, uh, it was, um, I thought that was very nice, and I thought I would share that with everybody, that was.
Yeah, I don't know how the teams are doing.
Awesome.
I don't have an update on this season either.
I don't know anything about that, I don't see any tweets about that, not the middle school.
They, they said that the kids were loving it.
Oh, I believe that, I do.
And it's, it's been a great program, so, uh, felt it had gotten that feedback.
So, I would just like to mention that, you know, there was conversation this evening about, um, the, the tone of the Board of Selectmen meeting around the, the five-year staffing plan for the school department, but if you haven't watched the finance committee, uh, where the five-year financial forecast was presented, including our five-year plan, the reception there was, uh, one that was much more thoughtful in nature.
Absolutely.
And genuine interest in, um, looking at the needs that we've outlined, and, um, trying to, you know, work collaboratively forward to, to find a way to, to meet the needs, um, so that was a very different experience in the same week, but much appreciated.
Any more, any other comments? No? Okay. Topics for future discussion?
I have one.
Yeah, you got one?
Yes.
What is it?
I'm hopeful, maybe we could talk about it at our next meeting, or meeting after, I know we're jam-packed, um, registration, school registration and, um, verifying residents. Still have some questions about that, and I feel like, I, I feel like I have some questions.
So, I can tell you that, um, with every registration, all of that paperwork is verified. We also, with the transition years, um, second to third, fifth to sixth, we request that the parents, um, resubmit, and we verify, just to ensure that everybody is still a resident. We do, um, from time to time, receive anonymous, um.
Email.
Or letters, um, that come in that claim that, um, we have residents from Fitchburg at the Lunenburg-Fitchburg line, uh, who are attending schools. If we receive, um, any communication around something like that, if we have an address, we can actually look and verify that the students are truly residents of, of Lunenburg. So, we, we do take those, um, those issues seriously, um, and we do, we do explore, um, it's difficult to get back to the person who raised the issue when it's anonymous, because we would like to be able to get back to them and let them know that in fact, we, we did explore and verify, and everything is, um, valid, but we can't when, when it's an anonymous letter that comes in. If, if we do have a way to return information, we certainly do, and we, we have had a, a question, uh, raised recently, so we are investigating that, but we do, from time to time, get those, those questions.
I still had some other questions about it, I don't know if, I mean, and maybe we can't do something about it for, for a while yet in terms of putting it on an agenda, but I would, at some point in the future, like to.
We already talked about the student rep.
Yes.
Getting.
Yes.
Information to us for every meeting from all the schools.
Right.
Okay.
For a future topic, can we add discussing letters for the Lunenburg letter, ledger, uh, going in?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Each of us, yeah.
Checkpoint.
Checkpoint.
Goals checkpoint.
Yeah. Maybe we should do that, goals checkpoint, goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Goals follow-up, check-in, okay.
Do we need a workshop, do you think we need a workshop for writing letters?
Letter and writing work.
Or do we, yeah, how do you just be?
Somebody could potentially draft something, and then I could just share it out.
It's a sample that we need a workshop for.
I don't know if we'd be drafting a letter during a meeting, that might be.
Maybe if we talk about, um, what's the specific topics, you know, I think we were talking like four or five different topics.
Yep.
You know, then we could each draft one, and we could share them.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll talk about that at a, a, a meeting coming up and then meet the topics, correct? We'll, we'll choose a topic.
Yeah, and if there's a meeting, like the meeting that the superintendent's not able to come, that might be a good.
Oh, no, we're not having that meeting.
Oh, okay.
That meeting.
Switched, yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Or you could have that meeting. Three meetings in March, March Madness.
Be the workshop.
No. Okay, then, um, so we, yeah, we have a lot of stuff on the agenda for the next meeting anyway.
Lot of good stuff.
Yeah.
All good?
Sounds good. So, um, we're going to go into executive session to conduct strategy, so, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel, not to return to regular session. So, we need a roll call.
Mr. Leitman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Lebeck?
Yes.
Mrs. Putrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Schroka?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Executive session.
We're.
No.
No filming, can't be filmed. We're all done.
Thank you.
That would be good, I think we did that in one of the other meetings.
That was it.
I forget which one, uh, some other town, I think, it was a local town.
He's didn't get it.
Really? Oh, my gosh.
It was accidental.
That's a terrible thing.
What's the deal with this one?
I could see that, that we had talked about that.
No, so I didn't sign it.
Yeah, we didn't sign it.
We did not, and that's right, I forgot to bring it up.
Still on the air.
I'm sorry, I wanted to show you that we didn't do one of the line item transactions.